Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our November 12, 2018 City Council Work Session. The time now is 6:05. See, we'll begin with our Visitors and Citizens Forum. Uh, the first speaker is Jack Lewis. Mr. Lewis?
First time I've been, first I can go home and go to bed for dark. Anyway, I'm Jack Lewis at 4600 Sable. Y'all may want to call me Andy Griffith because I'm going over the same thing I've gone on 20 years. Now, I forgive what I'm speaking on. Can you hear me okay? Uh, Trump, you're hearing aid there, mayor? Okay, can you hear me now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I got three minutes. I won't tell you, but seriously, our city is going the way I s- and I said this 20 years ago, 30 probably now. We are, if when we lower our standards to the standards of people that are moving into Haltam City from other parts of the world, what have they gained? Because we are and have become, we, I used to say that we're going to be, we are a, lots of areas, third world situation. Coming down here, my neighborhood, brand new in 1964, two houses, driveway and garage. Now every garage except two are filled with junk and they got $30,000 vehicles sitting outside, some of them on the street. Coming down here, and here's what I want to mention, uh, Chief Phillips is here. And if our council here cannot instruct our staff to enforce the law, then we need to change the ordinance instead of off-street parking, that's my subject. And I know y'all drive around, I drive around a lot. You can't get down these streets, they've been made one-way in most, most every neighborhood. Our neighborhood been cleared up until recently, people have voluntary parked at least in the driveway. But now, when you come down here, I can show you, and y'all know this too, up to 12 cars, not in front of the house because they won't hold them. And there'll be space sometimes in the dr- this shouldn't be. And if our ordinances or our charter does not cover it, we need to change it so that our staff can enforce the law. I've talked with several individual policemen, they cannot, when you, when you see co- the streets are made for driving, not for storage. And I believe that you've got three different sections of our charter, the code ordinances, dealing with off-street parking. Now, one thing, street sweeper, and I said this 20 years ago, if I had to cut anything in the budget from y'all run short of money every year, you know, is quarter million dollars for a street sweeper, us, and I watched them, they're on my street just recently. They can't get up and down the street to sweep the curb and gutter. There's cars all over it. Now, they keep the leaves out of the thing where it goes in, stops up, I know the story. But, there's a better way, you could put a screen at these inputs and keep these leaves out. I swept them out of the street on our block to keep them going in the, these, uh, now they're shedding. Well, the fruit and small berries, they ought to be prohibited. They u- when they built houses in 64, they put out fruit and small berries. Man, they fill up the sewer system. Put a little screen on it rather than buying a quarter million dollar truck to suck them up. Now, I know it does more than that, but those cannot, garbage trucks cannot get down to the curbs. Y'all know this, that's why I'm just repeating it. So, if I haven't used my three minutes, I relinquish it to whoever's going to speak. But I wish we would take a proactive report, you can't do it overnight. But we need to really get serious about upgrading our inner city. And I will say between Broadway and Stanley Keller, it's nothing but a ghetto in a lot of areas. Outside storage, and I know this is in the ordinance, I passed two coming down here, it looks like a junkyard in front. Now, when a police car goes by there, they can see it, I think they ought to ride them up. By the way, on off-street parking, come up with an idea on making some revenue. If they're going to use the street for a parking lot, well, we pay, we pay $3 million to fix junior lane, you can't get up and down it, but one way most of the time. Charge them. I said, well, we don't have any way to enforce it. Figure out a way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Uh, next is, uh, Darren Hudson. Okay, Mary Hunter? We're not, no, we're not going to defer time, we're just, you got the same amount.
How long?
Uh, let's see. I'm going to defer time. Uh, six minutes.
Okay. My name's Mary Hunter, I live at 3413 Metogg Strive in Haltam City. And I want to address y'all about something that come to my knowledge. Y'all are so curious about Mary Hunter, that y'all will run a background check. Well, let me tell you a little bit about Mary Hunter. As I was trying to figure out how I was going to address y'all, I was praying and I was asking God to help me. Scripture after scripture came to mind. He told me, "No weapon formed against me will prosper. Ye of no sin cast the first stone." We all fall short of the glory of God. Y'all do know, the people in the Bible, Moses was a murderer, and so was Paul. And David was a man after God's own heart. Noah was an alcoholic. Rehab was a prostitute. Peter denied Christ. And y'all, and God still used them. And I do believe I'm still usable in God's eyes. So, to answer the burning question of, "Does the church know about my background?" Yes, they do. And you know what they say? It's not how you started the race, but how you finished that really counts. And if you're doing it for the glory of God, no man can stop you. Even the heavens rejoice about one lost soul turning back to God. You want to know what else it says in the Bible? To take care of the elderly, the widowed, and the disabled. And the children. And that is why I do what I do. So, if I'm doing it for the Lord, ask yourself, "Who are you working for?" I was asked many times if I want to know some dirt on people on the council. And my answer was, "If I did that, I'd be no better than y'all." That I don't care what y'all have done in your past. I only care about what you're doing to Haltam City and the citizens of Haltam City. Y'all sit up here and y'all pray before the council meetings for God to guide you in the decisions y'all make. But I promise you, God would never, ever hurt anyone. He would give his last for someone to have food and to have prescriptions. He would never take away from the less fortunate to the point of making them homeless. So, can you ask yourself if you're walking in the glory of God today? If you was to die today, would you hear, "Good job, my faithful servants"? You know what? You do on earth does determine your jewels in heaven. You do know, all of us are only going to get to heaven by God's good grace. Oh, and something else, sin is sin in God's eyes. It's all the same. So, when you judge me, you're sinning just like I sinned when I broke the law and I went to prison. And you know what else? We're both going to get to heaven. You may judge me on earth, but you'll never judge me in heaven. And that's the place I'm headed. I'm only passing through this destination. My destination is heaven. Oh yeah, and by the way, if my testimony saves one addict, one criminal from the streets, then it's well worth the pain I went through, which you know nothing about. You can pull a background check and that's only going to tell you what I did on paper. It doesn't tell you the years of abuse I went through. It doesn't tell you about a little girl that lost her dad at the age of 18. Or the man she married that broke her eye bone, her cheekbone, her ribs. And I didn't have a dad that could come save me from the grips of an abusive relationship. I bet you never had to act like you had to go to the bathroom so you could climb out a bathroom window just to hide in a creek bed. Or to have your kids look at you with horror. Because you're beat up so bad, you look like an elephant man. Or to have your 13-year-old son run around these streets with a baseball bat looking for a man he called dad. Or to be hit in the head with a gun and it go off. Or trying, or trying to leave there, to get out of the circumstance and him shoot at you and the radiator bust. Or to be held at gunpoint and it goes off right above your head. You don't know the man went to prison and for six years, I lived a productive life. I bought a house, a new car, I had it all together. Till that man walked out in 2006 and got me, and I thought I had no choice but to go. He was 6'2", 300 pounds, and he was coming after what was his. And he did. I prayed and I prayed for God to help me. And in 2009, when I went to prison, I walked in there and I turned myself in. I spent the next year working on my relationship with God. And I came out to never even get a traffic ticket. And in 2013, they said that one of the charges fell through in 2009 and sent me back to prison. I had no clue why God would allow that. Until I came home and Karen and Darren took me under their wings. God had a plan for me. God had a plan for me even before 2013. But I never felt like I would be anything but an ex-con. They took me in and they showed me I had a purpose in life. And God could use me to reach many. And together, we have built God's church where everyone is welcome. The ex-con, the drug addict, the alcoholic, and the lost souls of this world. And that's what God wants. He doesn't want you to sit up there and judge people you know nothing about. Almost everyone has a past. And behind every background check is a story you know nothing about. And in 2010, my 19-year-old cousin was killed by her boyfriend. I filed for a divorce and I never looked back. And in 2018, that monster got out of prison. The only difference in 2006 and 2018 is I can't be bullied no longer. I'm not that timid little girl that he could abuse and scare. Don't think he didn't try. But I'm a survivor and I'm a child of the Most High King. And I will hold my head up and I'll walk these streets helping the citizens of Haltam City. Now you know the whole story of Mary Hunter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Uh, Stacy Corbin.
Hi, Stacy Corbin, 4505 Nadine. So, and first, I just want to say how proud I am of Mary Hunter. Um, a lot of us have known her for a lot of years. We knew her then and we know her now. And we've seen the transformation, so I just wanted to say how proud we are of her. And in the interest of full transparency, I've known her so long, my past is probably worse than hers. But I'm really proud of who I am. I'm not ashamed of my past, I don't hide from it. If anybody ever has any questions, not just on the council, but anyone, we're both open books. Most of us are pretty well open books. Um, we've all made mistakes. Some of ours are different than some of y'all's, but everybody's made them. Um, but what I really wanted to discuss, um, was the Fathom situation. I know it's kind of a broken record and I know y'all are sick of hearing about it and I appreciate y'all for bearing with me on it. Um, I'm hoping at maybe one of the future meetings, we can maybe get an update, kind of see where we're at. Um, and then I wanted to mention a personal case that I've had that happened since the audit has happened or since the audit started. Um, I don't know, some of you are probably aware, there was a, a certain case, so some of us took it upon ourselves to donate and help out with. Um, and after the bill was paid in full, we donated directly to Fathom, by the way. We didn't give the girl any money. Uh, but we did donate directly to Fathom. And her bill was paid in full that morning, her water was turned on at noon. By 4:00 PM, she got a call saying, um, her next bill was due to avoid disruption of service. So, we were a little confused about that. And as it turns out, what Fathom had told her was that the first donation made didn't go through. So, they charged her that amount plus a $35 late, or not $35 late fee, a $35 insufficient fee type, you know, insufficient fund fee. But what, what concerns me is the person who made that payment had texted me and she said, "You know, I have plenty of money in the bank. You know, I don't understand." So, she went down to her bank and her bank said, "No transaction was ever initiated by Fathom." So, Fathom had never tried to put that through. And the bank said, of course, they would be willing to give her a statement of that. Um, and they did give her a printout of her history. So, my concern is, in a situation like that, and then of course, you know, they did try to notify Fathom to see if Fathom would at least, because we did end up making that additional payment, um, to see if Fathom would at least refund or credit her account for that $35 insufficient fund, since we do feel like it was a mistake made on Fathom's behalf. Um, and we're, and I won't say we're because it wasn't my account, but she was told no. So, I'm, I'm kind of hoping, you know, I know this is after the fact, but I'm hoping things like that, will those be looked at in the audit? You know, um, I don't know if any other people have had that case or that type of situation. So, I don't know if that's something that'll be brought up to the auditors. But I think it, you know, it's something that they should, if there's one, there may be others. So, not that we, any of us think that there's anything wrong if somebody has an insufficient fund or an insufficient transaction paying that fee, but shouldn't charge the fee if it's not insufficient. Um, and there was a couple of other things I wanted to cover, but I'm kind of scatterbrained tonight, so I'm just going to thank y'all for your time and patience.
Thank you. Uh, the next speaker, uh, Tri- uh, Tri- Tri Fowler.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I wasn't able to be here at the last meeting, I understand it was quite interesting. Um, first of all, Mary Hunter, I want to thank you for your testimony, you and Stacy both. And I'm proud to hopefully consider y'all as friends and call you as friends. And I have no, uh, no problem in doing that. So, and I thank all y'all have done for the city and for the community. Uh, like I said, is, Mayor, can you clarify though real quick? Is it three minutes or six minutes? Because this still says six minutes. Is it three or six?
It's six, right?
It's six. So, this is correct then?
This is correct.
I appreciate y'all getting that correct then. Um, one of the topics I'd like to discuss is suppression, you know, and, and it's, it's very discouraging, especially in the society we live in today. The fact that, um, you know, I know that the, through the Fathom process, there was open re- there were open records requests turned in for the contracts that took months and months on end. Just to show y'all a little frustration, I filled out open records requests. We're keeping Mr. Olson's office busy, there's 19 right here, plus Ken Paxton. It's almost impossible to get an open records request. And that's absurd. This is supposed to be an open and transparent government. And Mayor, I'd like to charge you, since we're not, you know, supposed to talk to anybody else, do something about this. This is absurd. When we're spending, I guarantee you, every one of these, when you look at these seven-page letters and they're doing them out, they're not boilerplate. It's costing us, I guarantee you, these are a thousand bucks a piece. I've dealt with attorneys a lot, you know, a lot in my life, and I can assure you, these are a thousand bucks a piece if they're a dollar. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous that you can file an open records request for simple things and you have to get one of these and then it says we have to go to the Attorney General. We don't have any problem sending everything else to Attorney General, doing witch hunts on council members, former council members, all that. So, why can't we just get some simple information? You know? It's not hard. It's, it's not anything that, you know, that, i- unless there's something to hide. I've been an accuser of there being plenty of cover-ups and I still think there are. You know? And I'll still continue to work on those. I understand that this last meeting, that, uh, one of the representatives from the Fire Department came up here and had some comments about me. I'll offer you, I'll offer Mr. Anderson, any opportunity they'd like to come and debate in any open forum, any place, anywhere, anytime. I have nothing to hide, once again. And Ms. Hunter, while you weren't getting traffic tickets, I probably was. So, uh, you know, there's not anything to hide, you know? We're in an age now that it, it's, it's ridiculous that you can't just have open and transparent government. So, I'm going to ask you, Mayor, to work on this and get it fixed for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. And seeing there are no other speakers' request forms, uh, with that being said, we'll adjourn into executive session pursuant to 551-071 and 072 of the Texas Government Code at 6:26.
Well, okay, I want to welcome everyone to our November 20th. Would everybody please rise?
Would you bow your heads with me? Our Father in Heaven, we come before you tonight with gratitude in our hearts for this opportunity that's afforded to us to meet together in clear diversity but hopeful for unity. And we ask for your favor and your blessing upon this business conducted and that we with prayerful consideration and with a disposition of humility might represent the best interests and overall well-being of Haltum City and her residents. God, I pray for a passion to be aroused within the hearts of community leaders, public servants, ministries, nonprofits, and businesses alike, that together we would work for the betterment of all peoples within our city. We express our dependency upon you and look to you for guidance and wisdom in everything that we do. We welcome you to be the center of it all and ask for your enduring favor to shine upon us as we move forward in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Moving right along to announcements and events, our City Secretary, Art Camacho.
Thank you, Mayor. Announcements for November 12, 2018. Road closings due to uncooperative weather, the status of the Carson Street Bridge Replacement Project has not changed. Carson Street under State Highway 121 will remain closed for approximately six more weeks. Again, this is dependent on the weather. The Frontage Road U-turns under State Highway 121 will remain open during this time, except when the contractor is working in the immediate area to connect the new bridge into the existing pavement. Motorists are asked to pay special attention to the construction signage as various traffic lanes may temporarily close for a day or two. Please continue to visit the city's website to obtain the latest information as weather may change or extend this time period. The city's website will indicate the latest information regarding these traffic changes and remember to always slow down and use caution in construction zones. Also, 5300 Fossil Creek Boulevard will be closed November 16 through the 19 due to road construction. In community projects, you're asked to join the Christian Center of Fort Worth for a free Thanksgiving dinner meal served from 11:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. on Thursday, November 22. Everyone is invited to attend. Free groceries and coats will also be distributed. Please join citizens on Saturday, December 1st from 2:30 to 5:30 p.m. for Haltum City's Christmas on Broadway Holiday Event. This is free family, this free family-friendly event will feature carriage rides, bounce houses, a petting zoo, Christmas craft and games as well, and so much more. And of course, Santa and Mrs. Claus will be there along with the local elementary school choirs providing entertainment. If you're able, N E E D will be collecting non-perishable foods to give back to the Haltum City community. The neighborhood decorating contest will begin December 10 through the 16th, so be sure to have your homes decorated for the holidays. Eighteen winners all across the entire city will be named across the entire city and thanks to the community for keeping this fun holiday tradition going. The Senior Citizens Annual Thanksgiving Dinner Holiday Dinner is this Friday at 11:30 a.m. and the special guest speaker will be Greg Ellis, former Dallas Cowboy, along with the Dallas Cowboys Cheerleader's alumni. Haltum Senior Citizen, Haltum City, Haltum City Senior Adults are asked, are invited to call the center to make reservations for this traditional holiday dinner. Volunteers are also asked to assist in serving meals. In the public library, the teen programs, family movie night, Super Science Saturdays, adult GED, ESL classes, and other library activities are listed on the library's website for the dates and times. They're having also a make and take book ornament for adults and teens that will be held on Wednesday, December 5th from 4 to 6. And you can come and go and make a book page ornament and supplies are provided. And at this time, Dr. Antrong is going to make an announcement.
Yesterday, we had a veteran, I think everything, nice, cool, cold. I would like to take this opportunity to apologize to Council Bob Watkins and Linda Thompson that I am, I was overlooked to present them during this event. Moreover, one of the important person that I did not know. I want to take this opportunity to thank you, Ms. Bonnie Richer and the family who donate big money for the water fountain and the big globe. That's beautiful. Without that squad, our memorial project don't look that good, right? And please take my apology that I overlooked to introduce you, this important people to that event. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Trong. Was that everything?
Hey, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Well, I would like everybody to know that our, the Haltum High School football team is 10-0 and the district champs. And their first gate, first game for the state playoffs is this Friday at the FAC. And tickets can be purchased at the school. I recommend that you get them early because I imagine it's going to be long lines to get into the game. So, come to the high school or the FAC and root for the Buffs and that's at Precinct and Mid-Cities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other announcements or events? Seeing none, moving right along to presentation. The T A A F Local Athlete of the Year, Kristy Pruitt. Welcome.
Hi there. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is my privilege and honor to be able to do some special award presentations this evening. And the Haltum City Parks and Recreation Department is a proud member of Texas Amateur Athletic Federation. That is a mouthful. That is TAF. It is a nonprofit organization that promotes, organizes, and conducts amateur athletics in the state of Texas. As a member city since 1970, our teams have had opportunities to participate in numerous regional and state tournaments in various sports hosted by TAF. And our staff members have the opportunity to receive wonderful training in the sports field as well as networking opportunities through TAF. This year, Haltum City was awarded the Gold Member City Award. This is the first time we have ever received this award since 1970. And this award recognizes significant participation, support, and involvement with TAF. We are grateful to the support that TAF has provided us as well as to our participants, coaches, and volunteers who make all of our sports programs so great. So I would like to welcome a couple of our staff members here. Nika Gunter is our recreation supervisor and Corey Hale is our athletic coordinator. And they're here to present the Gold Member City Award to the Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Oh, fantastic.
All right, we're not done. We can take a picture. We've got two more awards we're gonna do. We don't need those yet. We'll do the gold first then. Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple more wonderful awards. Again, these are new to Haltem City. Uh, I've been here for 13 years and we have never done these kind of awards. It's very exciting for us. Um, we have nominated a Local Athlete of the Year and I'd like to tell you a little bit about this outstanding kiddo. Uh, Jalen Sullivan has played football every year with the Haltem City Pee-wee Football Association since he was five years old. He's won three back-to-back Super Bowls with the Bantam Ravens. He played, excuse me, played four seasons of baseball with the Haltem City Youth Baseball Association and also played five seasons with the Haltem City Youth Basketball League. Jalen has been a part of the TAF Region Four Evolution of Speed Summer Track Team since he was five, winning the silver medal at the regional track meet and placing 17 out of 50 kids at the state meet in College Station this summer. Right before his competition, he suffered an asthma attack about four hours before he was to compete in the, uh, shot put, I believe. Um, got treated in the emergency room and after his release went straight to the track, ready to compete. Mom and dad gave him the option to withdraw because his health, of course, was most important, but he refused to quit. So Jalen went on and gave it his all. Jalen is an athlete that shows persistence and dedication and Haltem City and TAF are proud to honor him, not only as our local athlete, but he was also voted as the Regional Four, Region Four Athlete of the Year. So, Jalen? Come on up.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I need a picture.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. So, moving right along to our regular agenda, first item on the agenda is the minutes. Consideration and or action regarding approval of the minutes of the meeting from October 22nd, 2018. Did anyone have any questions or comments regarding these? Councilmember Grow, did you have any questions or comments regarding these?
No, sir.
Well, we are in line for a motion. Uh, Councilmember Weest?
Make a motion to approve. I make a motion to approve. Hey, Walter, you're gonna have to mute.
Why?
Mute.
I'm not muted.
I know, mute. I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Weest. We have a motion, uh, for approval. Uh, Councilmember Thompson.
Mayor, that would be for a second.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Councilmember Grow, we have a motion for approval for the minutes and we have a second. How, how do you vote?
Approve.
Okay, a motion for, Councilmember Grow votes for approval. Uh, Council, if you would please signify your votes. Okay, motion passes unanimous. Uh, now, Councilmember Grow is actually Skyping in this evening. He is at the Hilton Houston West Chase in Houston, Texas. That's where he's joining us from. Uh, so, moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, Reconstruction of Lower Birdville Road. Consideration and or action regarding approval of a three-way agreement with Wilburger Street LP and Reliable Paving, Inc. for the reconstruction of Lower Birdville Road between State Highway 121 and Carson Street. Mr. Van Newen, you's, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, earlier this year, a gentleman by the name of Chad Alvarez platted approximately 4.6 acres at the southwest corner of Carson and 121. He platted it as the Wilburger Commercial Complex. This area outlined in blue. As part of this development and in accordance with our regulations, the Engineering Division conducts what we call rough proportionality determination. And what that is, is when a development comes into Haltem City, we try to determine what's roughly proportionate in terms of the infrastructure that they should construct. It's pretty obvious that the internal infrastructure that's needed to support the buildings would be at the developer's expense. However, what's sometimes not so obvious is that there is an impact to our roadway system and that the developer should either reconstruct adjoining roads or provide the city with the economic equivalent. In the case of Chad Alvarez's development, it was determined that the most appropriate thing to do at the time was to pledge the economic equivalent, which was a little over $76,000. The city did enter into an agreement where Mr. Alvarez was on the hook for $76,000 and at the time, the city was going to reconstruct one of the surrounding roads. That money could be used towards that. However, shortly after construction, it became very apparent that Lower Birdville Road, specifically this section here, this is the frontage road for 121, this is Carson Street, was rapidly deteriorating. Probably the main reason for that is because the Carson Bridge Project, which is right up over here, has Carson closed. So, Lower Birdville's probably always been used as a cut-through to some extent, but with the closure of that bridge, it's probably been used quite a bit more. So, with that deterioration, the, Mr. Alvarez was concerned that this is an entry point to his development. He would like to see Lower Birdville reconstructed. His concrete contractor, which is his prime contractor, is Reliable Paving, which at the time was the city's concrete contractor. In the course of constructing the development, the contractor did some damage to the curb and gutter, which he's, he's willing to replace. But we looked at what the cost would be if the three of us entered into a three-way agreement to reconstruct Lower Birdville Road. And all parties were receptive to enter into such an agreement. Uh, the agreement is in your agenda packet. It has been reviewed and approved by the city attorney. But in, real quickly, what that agreement means is the $76,000 that Mr. Alvarez pledged to put towards streets at a later date would be using that now for the reconstruction of Lower Birdville. Reliable Paving would be doing most of the work in terms of stabilizing the subgrade and installing new curb and gutter in the pavement. And the city's responsibilities would be to remove the existing curb and gutter, remove some of the existing pavement, would coordinate with our asphalt supplier to provide the asphalt, and then we would pay Reliable Paving just under $40,000. In terms of the utilities underneath the roadway, there's both sanitary sewer and water. The sanitary sewer was replaced in the last 10, 15 years. It is still in relatively, well, not relative, it's in fairly good shape. The water main, however, needs to be replaced. We can replace that with in-house crews. So that's what we intend to do. We won't start any of that work until Carson's reopened the traffic. So having stated all that, it would be staff's recommendation that the city enter into this three-way agreement with Chad Alvarez of the Wilburger Street LP, Reliable Paving, and ourselves. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Mr. Van Newen. Uh, Dr. Trong?
Yes, sir. Uh, it is a two-way traffic or three?
It's just a two-way street.
No, no center lane, right?
No.
And the dimension is still the same, except we just paved them again or what?
Correct. We would, it'd just be like a normal reconstruct project. However, it's fairly cost-effective. It would go back as an asphalt street.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to know.
Thank you, Dr. Trong. Uh, Councilmember Grow, did you have a question regarding Agenda Item Number Two?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any other questions or comments from the council regarding this agenda item? Uh, Councilmember Thompson?
Um, you were mentioning replacing the eight-inch cast iron water pipe.
Correct.
Are there any others, though, that would be subjected in the next few years that maybe, even though they're in possibly good shape now, that we need to look at?
We looked at that and we felt that the other utilities were in relatively good shape, so that, that wouldn't be an issue. Because we realize that nothing irritates residents more than tearing up a brand-new street.
Right. And that was what I was getting at, because, um, there is a municipality close by that when they put in a new street, within two weeks, they're already tearing up the street. So I just wanted to make sure that we are proactive. If there are anything that we can do now that would eliminate issues later.
And we looked at that, so I think we've got that covered.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Are there any other questions or comments regarding this agenda item? Seeing none, we are now in line for a motion. Doc, Councilmember Trong? Councilmember Trong?
Man, Council, I go ahead to make a move to approve the three-way agreement with the Wilburger Street LP and Reliable Paving Incorporated for reconstruction, the section of Low, Lower Birdville Road between 121 and Carson Street.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember None?
Thank you, Mayor. That's for a second.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, so we have a motion for approval in a second. Uh, Councilmember Grow, we have a motion for approval in a second. How do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, Councilmember Grow votes yes. Uh, Council, if you would please signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, Council. Uh, moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Carson Street Bridge Replacement Project. Change Order Number Seven. Consideration and or action regarding approval of Change Order Number Seven in the amount of $76,392.47 to the Carson Street Bridge Replacement Project.
Good evening again. In this agenda item, staff is requesting that you ratify previous action and that is to approve a change order in the amount of a little over $76,000 on the Carson Bridge Project. The reason for this change order is there was a survey bust when the project was designed. The engineer that we hired was also responsible for surveying services. So, they are partially responsible for this. I put it that way because had there not been a survey bust, this work would have needed to have been done. But because of the survey bust, the contractor's bid prices now, it's a change order, some of his bid items have gone up to do the work. It's required a small change on the plans, so the amount is $76,000. However, out of that amount, a little under $24,000 of it is because of his cost increases. That amount, the engineering firm, we've met with them and they will pay that amount. So, had this not come about, this issue would have been indicated on the plans and the cost would have been somewhere around $52,000. So, staff is recommending that you ratify our decision to execute the change order. So the net result would be $52,000. A little bit about why you're seeing this change order is, not that we're trying to hide anything, but change orders less than $50,000. The city manager has the authority by our purchasing manual to go ahead and execute. With text dot contracts, before we could even enter into a construction project with them, we have to sign a master agreement. That master agreement requires us to pay anything above what text dots capped at. We executed that agreement back in the 2000 timeframe. In 2011, we issued a local agreement that was project-specific for this project. And just a few years ago, we amended that agreement because some of the items have changed in the original agreement. And that amendment, it also indicates that the city is responsible for all cost overruns. So really, in this situation, we have no choice. That's what we've committed to with text dot. This issue became to light just a day or two prior to your last council meeting. It was going to hold up construction. So because of those reasons, we're obligated to execute this change order. Staff went ahead and signed the change order. However, to be in full compliance with our purchasing manual, it would be appropriate now to ratify the city manager's authorization of that change order. Hopefully, that made sense. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this issue.
Thanks, Mr. Van Newen. Uh, Councilmember Thompson?
The funds that we used to pay for this, um, I noted that you have allowed, made allowances in the budget. Was this particular, uh, project, had you estimated anything for it or was this other projects that you allocated for?
Based on experience, I estimated, I want to say somewhere around $400,000 for this project. So, with the change orders to date, including this change order, we're well within that amount.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Greg, for the presentation. Uh, I see where that we have in the budget a half a million dollars allocated for this type of cost increase. Being this early into our fiscal year, I suppose this is the first time we're going to draw down from this half a million dollars.
And actually, we're not going to be drawing, at the end of the project, text that does an audit and then they send us an invoice. My estimation is if the project finishes, say, in December, we might get that audit prior to the end of this fiscal year. So we have not taken any of the money out, even with the other change orders. So we're not really drawing down right now. So the important thing is, since I had budgeted somewhere around a half a million, is that we don't bust that number. Being the project is so close to completion, I don't foresee that occurring.
And that's what, that's why I was asking. You know, here we are, early into our fiscal year. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Uh, Councilmember None?
Thank you. Um, just a quick question. I know normally you set aside, you know, for overages and things. Um, is it a certain percentage of the total projected cost? Is that the way you do it or you just, or you do it, um, project by project?
I do it project by project. I look at, sometimes on a complicated project such as this, I don't have a set percentage in my hand. I may go a little bit greater because it is so complicated. Something that's straightforward is a water main or sewer main. I, maybe on contingencies, it's less than 5% of the time we go to construction because it's very straightforward. But on a project like this, on a bridge project where you're working in wet conditions, you don't know what you're going to come up underneath. In fact, on this project, we have come up with some utilities that fortunately there weren't ours. There were a different utility company that no one knew was there. So, so it all depends on the project.
So is, um, okay, I understand that part, but like, for some reason, there's 10% in my head about, you know, on big construction, uh, projects.
And probably what you're used to seeing is when I prepare a budget and at the time, we're just scoping out the project, haven't done any surveying or anything like that. I typically do contingency's of 10 to 15%. And that's probably where you see that number.
That's probably where I'm thinking about it. Okay. And then as, as it comes down to it, it goes into a smaller number. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., uh, Ms. Dunn. Uh, Councilmember Grow, did you have a question regarding this?
Uh, yes. What is a survey bust for people that are not familiar with construction trades and things like that?
On some of the data, what ended up happening is where the contractor was supposed to tie in and what the actual elevation in the field was, was roughly 10, 12 inches of difference. So somehow, and they didn't tie in their survey so that it was a foot off on both ends of the bridge.
Okay, appreciate it.
So essentially, if they were to tie in, they would have to make up that foot in a rather short distance. So what they're doing is they're extending the transition length. So that extension of the transition length is what this change order covers.
Any other question? Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we are, uh, in line for a motion. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to exalt the Carson Street Bridge Replacement Project Change Order Number Seven in the amount of $76,392.47.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion for approval. Uh, is there a second? Uh, Dr. Trong?
I'm second, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember Grow, we have a motion for approval and in a second, uh, for this agenda item. How, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, Councilmember Grow votes affirmative. So, Council, if you would please, uh, signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Van Newen. Uh, let's see, moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, miscellaneous concrete improvement bid, number?
Unfortunately, I'm only halfway done, Mayor. I still got two more items.
Oh, you do, okay. Well, okay, so let's see. B, okay, bid number B, 201. Well, okay, so let's see, B, okay, bid number B, two oh one nine dash three one one dash zero zero one.
And with the help of the city's purchasing department, we went out for bids on our annual concrete contract. The way we've done that over the last few times is while we do go out and bid for the annual concrete, we also include in there an option for two additional years, and that's at the city's discretion, whether we wanna issue those options or not. The most recent bid was conducted on October seventeenth. We did receive three bids, which the time before this, we only received one bid, so I was pleased to see that this generated a little bit more interest than it did just a few years ago. But we did receive three bids. They were from Reliable Paving, G-Rod Construction, and Urban Infraconstruction. The low bid out of those three was from Reliable Paving, which was our previous annual concrete contract provider, and again, like I said, they were low bid. Staff would recommend that we award them the annual concrete contract. Reliable Paving has been very responsive to our needs. They've been able to schedule their crews when we've needed to come out and have them replace any extensive sections of curb and gutter, street repair. They also do, whenever we have a water main break or sewer break underneath a concrete street, they're also the entity that will go ahead and replace those sections of pavement. If council has any questions, Janet would be happy to address them.
Uh, Councilmember Brown?
Thanks again, Mayor. Uh, in, in looking at these contractors, did we, was there anything? Can I ask, were they from Halton City, or are they minority-owned, or did they fall under any of these guidelines?
All the above.
All the above? They're from Halton City?
We did have, sorry, let me pull that out. We did have one from Halton City, several from Fort Worth, Hurst, Ulyss, and one from Louisville.
And Reliable is, were they based?
They're in Arlington, I believe.
Right, the Halton City contractors, from what I'm seeing on our list, did not bid on the project.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, uh, for the council? I'm sorry, for, from the council, for, uh, Mr. Van New News. Uh, Mr. Grow, Councilmember Grow, do you have a question regarding this agenda item? This is number four.
No, sir.
No? Okay. Uh, Councilmember Thompson?
And you may have answered this, but I'll just ask. Is the quality of concrete or their work ever an issue?
It hasn't been, no. They've been, it's always passed their task. We haven't had any problems.
So we don't have to worry about somebody changing any quality as far as that goes?
No, they've had, there are, let's say, current, up to this point, there are annual concrete contractor, and even the contract before this one, they were, they were the low bidder, so they seem to do, you know, be able to bid real competitively, and we've had no issues with the quality of their product, or their workmanship, or their timeliness.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Uh, Dr. Trong?
Great. I would like to ask you, uh, why we need so many contracts for one project like this?
Well, what this entails, it's, it's concrete curb and gutter of various widths, whether the gutter pan be twenty-four inches or thirty inches. It covers sidewalks of four foot in width, five foot in width. It covers various retaining walls, so there's a lot of items, individual items, that the contractor is bidding on. What we historically look at is what we've done in previous years, and that's what we tailor this contract towards. With giving us a little bump, maybe last year, we did five hundred foot of sidewalk, so this year, we may bid seven hundred so that we make sure that we stay under the quantity instead of going over it.
And the Reliable Paving Company here, we, how many years have we been using them? Or just new one or what?
We've been using them for four years. I think the first year they got the contract was the fall of two thousand fourteen.
I'm just like Councilman Bro, I mean, Brown, uh, if we can award, you know, local people, you know, will be better than somebody in Fort Worth, I believe, in Hottosie, have a lot of them, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trong. Are there any other questions or comments from the council for, uh, Mr. Van New News or Ms. Carver? Seeing none, we are now in line for a motion. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept the Concrete Improvement Bid, B two zero one nine dash three one one dash zero zero one uh, to the Reliable Paving Company.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Councilmember Weest?
For a second.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember Grow, we have a motion for approval in a second for Reliable Paving. Um, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, Councilmember Grow votes yes. Uh, council, if you- To add that second part?
Councilmember, uh, Thompson, the second part of that is to ask about G-Rod Construction as a secondary vendor.
Okay.
Would you amend your motion to just add that?
Yes, I amend that, uh, motion for bid B two zero one nine dash three three one dash zero zero one to, uh, add the supplemental award to G-Rod Construction as a secondary vendor.
And Mr. Weest is?
Still approve.
Okay, he's still have a second. Uh, Councilmember Grow, did you see, did you hear the amendment to the, uh, to the motion? To include G-Rod Construction as the secondary?
Yes, sir, and I still vote yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Council, if you would please, signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you. Moving right along to agenda item number five, Street Sweeper. Consideration and/or action to purchase a street sweeper for two hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars for the two, twenty nineteen Timco Street Sweeper from Timco Incorporated through their contract with HGAC, and expressly authorize the city manager to execute any and all change orders within the amount set by state and local law.
Good evening once again, and my final item, and I appreciate you holding back the tomatoes, is staff is recommending that council award a contract in the amount of two hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty for the purchase of a twenty nineteen Timco Street Sweeper. This was allocated in the current fiscal year budget. The amount we budgeted was two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so this is within the budgeted amount. This street sweeper will replace a two thousand and two Elgin Street Sweeper, so that street sweeper that's replacing is sixteen years old and out. Street sweeper's pretty much out of service. There's really two main brands of street sweepers for our type of municipal work, the Elgin and the Timco. We've obviously had both. The other street sweeper that we have is the Timco. We have found that the Timco is a lot easier to operate, requires less maintenance, and suits our needs better. So that's the route we went going through the Houston-Galveston area contract. So staff would recommend award of that street sweeper. If you have any questions, again, either Ms. Carver or myself would be happy to address them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van New News. Uh, Dr. Trong, you have a question for Councilman, for Mr. Van New News?
I have a lot of question for you. I have a lot of question for you, right?
Okay.
I'm not picking you, I just want to learn a little bit. By the way, if you got the two thousand nineteen Timco here, how many street sweeper we have in the city total?
Two. We have two presently, but one of them-
Replacement or?
Right, that's basically what we're doing.
And what the life expectation for the new one, like, how many years in service or what?
I, I think sixteen on the existing one is really probably too much to ask for. I think much more reasonably would be ten to twelve years.
Okay, and, uh, do they have warranty on them, or just, uh, anything like?
Yes, they do.
Because later on, you ask for thirty thousand dollars of repair, you know, and-
Yes, the international, uh, engine for the whole unit would be a five-year warranty or a hundred and fifty thousand miles. The sweeper engine is a John Deere. That'll be five years or five thousand hours. And the Timco sweeper itself is a one-year or a thousand hours for the warranty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trong. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Grow, do you have a question regarding this agenda item?
Yes, sir. Um, the, the need for the street sweepers, my understanding is, is because of, I'm, I always mess it up, is, but the Texas EPA has mandated that we, um, street sweep in parts of our city?
That's correct. As part of our stormwater pollution prevention plan, we are required to street sweep our collector's streets, I wanna say, six times a year, and our residential streets, three times a year. And with just the one street sweeper, basically, we're having a difficulty meeting that, and that is a requirement of the TCEQ.
And how many hours do we put on those, uh, street sweepers a month average, do you think?
I think it's probably closer to twenty hours a week, so eighty to a hundred a month.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Grow. Uh, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, two, two questions. We're replacing one street sweeper that's completely down, correct? What will we do with that?
We'll probably put it out for auction. I mean, there's no need to keep it.
Okay.
But I'm, I don't have any thoughts that we'll get it very much money for it.
Thank you, sir.
And what your model is the other one, the, it's a relatively fairly newer one, right?
I wanna say it's, uh, two thousand eleven or two thousand twelve, so it's six years old.
Okay. Are there any other questions, uh, from the council for Mr. Van New News or Ms. Carver? Seeing none, we are in line for a motion. Uh, Dr. Trong?
Man, council, I go ahead, make a move to approve purchase a street sweeper, two thousand nineteen Timco, for the price of two hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion for approval. Uh, Councilmember Thompson?
That would be for a second, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
May I, would like to ask, uh, sent in here, like, authorize the city manager to execute it?
Okay. Does that need to be included in this? Okay. Uh, Councilmember Grow, we have a motion for approval and a second, uh, for agenda item number five. How, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilmember Grow votes affirmative, so council, if you would please, uh, signify your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you. Moving right along to agenda item number six, which is a fire pumper. Consideration and/or action to authorize the purchase of a two thousand seventeen Spartan Pumper Truck from Metro Fire Apparatus Specialist, Inc. through their contract with HGAC in the amount of four hundred and nineteen thousand. And the recommendation, uh, that the city manager be expressly authorized to execute any and all change orders with the amount set by state and local laws.
Mayor, council? Uh, as you said, the fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget is for a purchase of a new in, fire engine. Staff is proposing to purchase a two thousand seventeen pumper with the purchase price of four hundred and nineteen thousand. Uh, this purchase did fit into a long-range plan to replace a two thousand and eight Rosenbauer unit to be moved into reserve status, and this new two thousand seventeen unit will continue to upgrade the frontline and reserve fleet and help reduce periods of time where we have no available apparatus to respond to calls due to surface, or service and maintenance issues. And with that, I'll just open it for questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, are there any, uh, questions from the council? Uh, Mr. Grow, do you have any questions or comments, uh, for Ms. Carver or our fire?
Well, uh, just, just one, uh, off the top of my head. Uh, by purchasing this new fire apparatus, would this get us back in sync with the replacement schedule of the fire trucks?
Yes, Councilman Grow, it sure would.
And can you explain why we, we got out of sync?
Why we got out of sync with that replacement schedule? Is that your question, Councilman?
Yes, sir. What, what was the catalyst for getting it out of?
The catalyst was, i-if we go back in time to the KME, if we look at that, was a nineteen ninety-two model apparatus. And as we continue with our replacement schedule, we hit a period of time there where we had a ladder truck that experienced a catastrophic failure, and we replaced that, that unit. So, uh, trying to get us back to a more normal replacement schedule, a sixteen-year replacement schedule, basically, the real goal there is either eight-year frontline or ten-year frontline, and then eight years reserve, or six years, depends on how long we keep it in frontline status. And obviously, with that replacement schedule, with the amount of mileage we put on apparatus, amount of calls we make, this obviously reduces our time where we're out of apparatus, or we have apparatus that are down. So to answer your question, yes, sir, uh, it will correct that issue, uh, and that occurred, uh, back about six years ago, when that, uh, we pretty much got out of, uh, rotation with our replacement schedules.
And, uh, do you have an idea when the next apparatus would have to be replaced?
Well, the recommendation would be in two thousand twenty-four. That would be the next recommendation. It's a two thousand twelve apparatus we have. Uh, and it will, it would be, that would be the, uh, the goal, and obviously, it just depends on its maintenance. I will not come to this council, just because it hits that magical sixteen years or eight years frontline. It will be a combination of, uh, service hours and usage, so uh, it's more of a need situation than just a strict replacement schedule.
Okay, I, I was just trying to get it all apart when, uh, to expect the next request for a replacement.
Yes, sir. We do have a brush truck that's, uh, that is, that needs to be replaced, and we're trying our best right now to do some maintenance on that, to extend its life right now to councilman, but it's a, it's, it's a mu-much less, uh, purchase price for that apparatus. So, uh, we're trying to do some, uh, some creative things this year, try to extend its life for a couple more years.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Grow. Uh, Councilmember Thompson?
Chief, got a couple of questions for you.
Yes, ma'am.
On this two thousand eight Rosenbauer unit, what do you know right off the amount of service and maintenance cost that has occurred on this particular unit?
I do not have it right in front of me, councilman, but this truck will go in reserve. It's not being replaced. The one that's gonna actually go away, that'll be sold, is a two thousand five Rosenbauer, so the two thousand eight Rosenbauer will go in reserve. Uh, so we'll keep it for a number of years, so the goal would, uh, would be to try to keep it at least for five or six, seven years. It just depends on its maintenance. But what I can do for your councilperson, I can get you those numbers for you. Uh, I may have it back there in my folder right now.
Oh, that's okay. Um, this is more informative for our audience, and also, just for the sake of outlining, what does the fire engine pumper, what is its actual duties as far as, uh, within our city? How do you use that?
It's used for all hazards, councilperson. Uh, if it gets called, if it's an EMS call, if it's a fire call, if it's someone who's fallen, needs help getting up. Uh, anytime we get called, we go twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, so, uh, that's its role. Uh, it'll, it's, our, our, our engines, uh, the goal too with our engines, we, we try our best to get those out first. So we're able to take some of the mileage off of our truck too, to try to keep it in the house more often. But, uh, you know, our mission is to protect the citizens of Halton City. If we're called, we're gonna go.
Exactly. That's what we want you to do. Uh, would you say this is probably our most versatile piece of equipment that we have, as far as your trucks?
Well, the engines, the pumpers, uh, they, their, their role, uh, they, their role is to support and operate and to fight fire, obviously, in the run EMS calls. Our trucks and our quints, they're very versatile. Uh, they have multiple missions. Uh, the engines, uh, they will, they will lay lines. Our quints and our trucks can do the same thing. Uh, so to answer your question, the most versatile, uh, I think the application it's used, to answer your question, it's very versatile.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. Uh, Councilmember None?
Thank you. Um, just a couple of questions. On the, the one that's on reserve, where, where is that, where are we gonna keep that one?
Uh, it will be stored at, at Station Three- Uh, it will be stored at, at station three. That's where it would be housed at. It'll be engine four seventy-five now, the two thousand and eight Rosenbauer. This new title will be engine four seventy-five, be a reserve apparatus. And the previous engine four seventy-five, that's one that will be sold.
Okay, but it's on reserve status, but it's able to be used at any time, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's in service.
It's ready to go.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then earlier you had mentioned, um, I know when, uh, councilman Grow asked the question, and you mentioned a catastrophic failure. What, what was that?
Well, uh, it was a ladder truck, and it came in contact with some high-powered voltage lines. And, uh, that was pretty much the, the catalyst, if you will, for his, his ultimate, uh, issue that occurred with it for it to be taken out of service. Uh, several years after it was repaired, uh, they actually caught on fire sitting on the ramp of station three. The cab of the truck caught on fire and actually, uh, burned the truck beyond repair.
Okay, was that from, was that the result of the original issue that we had with it and getting caught with the high wires or?
It's still, it's still in speculation, councilperson. I would, I would say that had a big, big thing to do with it. I mean, all the wiring was replaced, but that...
No one was injured from that, though?
No, ma'am.
No electrocutions or anything like that?
Luckily, we had, we had men, people on the ground spotting the ladder, and it was, it was just, it just happened. And, uh, nobody come in contact with it. It hit the top line, which is the high voltage lines, and at station one, and it was conducting a test that morning, and that's when that occurred.
Okay, so it went out of service at that point for an extended period of time, put it back in service, and then it caught on fire?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And we still don't know really what the cause of it was.
It's gone away. It's been sold. So the ultimate cause, uh, I can speculate, but no, ma'am.
Okay, all right. I just, I couldn't remember the, what was going on with that one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Nun. Are there any other questions or comments from the council for either Ms. Carver or our, uh, fire chief? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council.
Uh, we, uh, we are in line for a motion. Uh, councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, mayor. I would like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of a twenty seventeen Spartan pumper truck from Metro Fire Apparatus Specialist, um, in their contract with H-GAC in the amount of four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars as recommended for the city manager to execute any and all changes, um, within the set amounts, um, as we have budgeted.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion for approval. Uh, councilmember Weest?
For a second.
Thank you, sir. Uh, councilmember Grow, we have a motion for approval and also a second for agenda item number six. How do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Council, if you would please signify your votes. Councilmember Grow votes yes. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, and thank you, uh, Ms. Carver and also, uh, fire chief. Moving right along to staff reports. Uh, our assistant city manager, Rex Phelps.
Yes, sir. Good evening, uh, mayor and council. Uh, I just wanted to give an update about Utiliworks. That's the company that was selected to do the auditing of, uh, the Fathom metering and billing system. Uh, they'll in fact be here in town tomorrow. They've, uh, already started their discovery phase and learning of the complaints and categorizing them. They will begin auditing customer service and billing, and then the software system. The meter exchange process will also be done in the field, beginning with forty meter exchanges. Citizens affected either have already been or will be notified by mail. The meters will be pulled and sent to Corix Utilities in New Jersey, which is a certified national lab. Uh, the, uh, meters are pulled, that will be pulled, will be replaced with brand-new meters. If initial testing is not satisfactory, an additional three hundred and seventy-three meters will be tested. Uh, the process involves independent analysis, measuring both quality assurance and quality controls for meter reading accuracy and billing process accuracy to include the software, uh, and systems. Now, that was redundant, but it's just that there are still some people that, uh, have expressed concerns that think that it's just about the meters. And sometimes, you, you know, it's good to just reiterate. It's, it's a lot more than just the meters. It's every aspect of the meters, the billing, the data conversion, everything. So I just wanted to make sure I give you guys an update. They are working on this. Uh, uh, one other thing, I was just, since I'm up here and we're very familiar with the example that Ms. Corbin had, uh, stated earlier about the, uh, the account where somebody tried to donate, uh, on behalf or pay on behalf of the, uh, that particular citizen or water account. What had happened is the, uh, citizen had entered the account number wrong, uh, when they went on, uh, once we, uh, and it, and it didn't pay. So what happened was, as soon as Fathom had figured out what happened, they waived the NSF fee, the non-sufficient funds fee. So we believe that one was straightened out. Just, just in case anybody didn't know about that, I just want to make sure that I, I brought that up. But it was an example she brought up, and it was true, but I just wanted to tell you what happened behind that. Uh, the other thing is, is that staff really, and I know we're not done, we're a long way done with this, and we've put it in the hands of a third-party, um, uh, firm, but staff really wanted to thank the council as a whole, the mayor and the council, because a lot of people just don't know how much you guys have helped staff, uh, being very proactive with the citizens' concerns and, uh, fielding those concerns and giving them to us. So we want to make sure that the entire council is, is, uh, we express appreciation to you. But we did want to make a, uh, uh, some special thanks to, uh, Mr. Watkins, Mr. Weest, uh, councilman Watkins and Weest, and, and even especially councilwoman Thompson. Uh, I will tell you right now that, uh, uh, they were very concerned with this, as we are, and there were many nights, um, that we were up past midnight, uh, fielding complaints, and on the weekends. And so we just want to say thank you, and, uh, these citizens, uh, need to know how much you guys care. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Moving right along to future agenda items. Uh, we don't have anything on here, but, uh, uh, councilmember Weest?
I wanted to put the visitor's citizens' warrant ordinance. I don't know if we want to discuss it in an executive session in the future, just to kind of go over it so we can get some clarification, because we've had some discussions in our last meeting, to where it should belong and not belong. And I think we just need to all discuss the council, just have the ordinance in front of us and just get some counsel from Wayne and just kind of go over it.
We can certainly do that. Uh, councilmember Watkins?
No wonder I can't hear my own self. Uh, for several years, uh, there's something that's gone past me, and I never have quite caught a hold on it, and that is the fact that, uh, when we plant and replant, planting and zoning looks at it, and, uh, then they pr- is presented to the council for our approval. That is not a state law. That's, that's our law. That's our, one of our ordinances. Uh, I went along with thinking some of the, some of the business people, the, the builders or whatever, might have been a little picky when they were saying, well, it was causing this problem, causing that problem. But lately, I've been hearing a lot about, well, I go in here and I start investing my money, and it, and, and so it has to go before two different groups, and it adds about thirty or so days. I mean, it always adds two or three weeks because you can get the planting zoning hears it, and then we hear it. But it's not un-unusual to last, uh, thirty to forty-five days lengthening. That wasn't the thing that really got my attention. So I started delving into it, and I discovered that if planting and zoning passes, uh, if, if they, if they say it's all right, and so we've got staff and planting and zoning, and then they present it to us, we cannot turn it down. There's something wrong with the picture of us having to look at something that we couldn't turn down even if we wanted to. So I'd like to have that on the next agenda to discuss.
Okay, we can certainly do that as well. Is there anything else? Seeing none, moving right along to boards and commissioners resignation. We have one resignation, uh, Chris Bethel from the charter review committee. So, uh, council, if you would please, uh, ratify the resignation with your, your vote. Oh, uh, councilmember Grow, uh, again, this is Chris Bethel resigning from the, uh, charter review committee.
I vote yes.
Thank you. I didn't see any other resignations. So are there any appointments? Uh, let's see. Uh, councilmember Weest?
Yes, sir, to replace, uh, my appointee Chris, I need to appoint Britt Ford to the charter review, please.
Okay. Councilmember Grow, uh, councilmember Weest made the recommendation to point Britt forward to the charter review committee.
I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. And council, if you would please ratify with your votes. Motion passes unanimous. Were there any other appointments or reappointments? Seeing none, we don't have the attendance requirements, uh, because we're all here. There's no executive session. That being said, for everyone, for the council members who are veterans, the veterans in our audience, and the veterans watching us via HCTV, we say never forget, and we adjourn at eight o'clock.